Good evening. It is 6:01 PM on July 21st. This is the Thursday Special Board Meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are all five directors, Director Campbell, Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, Director Johnson, and myself. We have executive staff and members of our staff, as well as members of the community and HYA via Chris and John here. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Members of the public can log into the Special Board Meeting using the Zoom link on our Board Docs website. With the Agenda Item 2.01, Executive Session, the board will now head into Executive Session at 6:01 PM. We will return at 7:01 PM. It is 7:01 PM and the board is still in Executive Session. We will be extending by another 30 minutes and be in return at 7:31 PM. It is 7:31 PM. The board is in Executive Session. We will extend by 10 minutes and will return at 7:42 PM. Still missing a couple directors, I think.
Yes ma'am. One moment. They're starting to pop in here, so.
Thank you, Keith.
Of course.
We're still missing Chuck, right?
Yes ma'am. Director Whitfield has not yet popped on, so waiting for him to come back in and then I can promote him.
We'll go and wait for him. Give him a couple extra minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and pause the recording until he pops back on. Is that okay?
Thank you. It is 7:45 PM and the board has returned from Executive Session. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, Business, and we have 3.01, Consideration of Selection of Candidates for Interim Superintendent Interviews. Is there a motion? I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors invite Marcy Larson, Marcus Pimpleton, and Sheldon Rosenkrantz to interview for the interim superintendent position on July 28th, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve for HYA to invite Marcy Larson, Marcus Pimpleton, and Sheldon Rosenkrantz to interview for the interim superintendent candidate discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed 5 to 0. Agenda Item 3.02, Consideration of Active Superintendent Contract. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School Board of Directors approve the CRB Consulting Contract for the temporary superintendent position as presented in the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the active superintendent contract discussion. So this contract, it's a CRB Consulting Contract, and it is to bring in Carl Bruner, who is a retired superintendent, and it's during the overlap while we are doing or running through the interview and selection process of our interim superintendent for the upcoming school year. Directors, anything to add?
I'm just happy that we have a veteran and local superintendent who's willing to help us while we're in that interim phase between, sounds weird, interim superintendent, but just filling that gap time.
All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Board Conversation. It's 4.01, Interim Superintendent Interview Planning Discussion. I will hand it over to HYA Consultants John and Chris.
Thank you. Want to revisit with you a discussion we had during our planning meeting regarding the screening of candidates with your announcement this evening of three candidates that you'd like to bring in. It naturally takes us to a place where we say, okay, what does July 28th look like for you and the candidates? And so a first discussion point is really deciding if the board wants a public component to the interview process. One of the ideas we talked about was the board conducting an interview where the public could tune in and then provide input to the board on each candidate the board interviews. The other customary part of a superintendent search is for the board to have an executive session opportunity also to meet with the candidate. So with that in mind, I know some of the questions were focused on whether or not that would result in some candidates not wanting to apply for the position, and we really did not encounter that in this search. So I don't think that's a concern the board needs to worry about in this case. So if you did want to have us facilitate a model where you would provide a public opportunity and conduct an executive session interview with the candidates, we've prepared a sample interview schedule that I could share with you. But before I do that, I guess I want to ask the question, is that the direction the board would like to go?
Oh, I'll go first. I'm okay with public interviews.
Okay.
I'm also okay with public interviews, but I have a question with, as you mentioned, public feedback. Is there a mechanism that allows our community to be able to do that? Do you have a survey tool they can be doing while the interview is conducted or after? What does that look like?
Great question. So yes, we, in recent searches, where, especially during COVID, where the interviews were actually conducted remotely, we've made use of the Google Form Tool, and what we've done is on the district's website, we'll have the name of each candidate posted in advance of the interviews, and we will have a link next to or under that candidate's name where immediately following their public interview. If you want to weigh in to give input to the board, you click on that link and you fill out a survey. Naturally, because the board would conduct these interviews in a single day, that survey is open for a relatively short period of time, and they're staggered for each candidate. In this case, you'd have three, so we do three separate Google Forms. And the nice thing about that tool is it immediately captures the responses, and then we put them together for you so that as you deliberate on the candidate's qualifications, you can see your stakeholder input as well. And given our time to prepare, that's what we're recommending in terms of the methodology. And we've, you know, seen that work very well and have had great participation with that model as long as we get the word out as far in advance as we can, so your community knows that's an opportunity. Other board member thoughts on a public interview and an exec session interview? One or the other, or both? Other opinions?
I am definitely for public interview. I think just transparency involving the public, making them a part of the process. We're kind of learning and walking through this together. I think that that's really important to bring unity for our community and provide some healing in the process as well. So I am all for public, open interview session.
Yeah, I agree. Just as a note with Dr. Smith, how long ago we went through that interview, there was five candidates, and then we took notes. We sat in a room, the district office, for, I think, five hours, and then we made notes, and then we handed a piece of paper. Guys remember that piece of paper and pencils? And then we did it that way, and we gave our input to the board. So Google Docs, good way to do it.
I'm excited for public interviews also, and even during our planning meeting, I was really excited about the Google Forms tool that you had talked about at that time. How are there ways that we've, in your experience, access to that form has been expanded? So like, have you ever worked with local organizations? I, the library comes up in my mind, the district office, to maybe provide access to folks who don't have internet, don't have cellphone, laptop, to be able to contribute to that survey?
We have the timing for that. Usually it's a kiosk situation because it's time sensitive, and we have to have responses pretty quickly. So where we have a longer window for like a stakeholder survey for the search like we did, we often go to paper forms as a way to accommodate folks with limited access to technology. In this case, I think the best we're gonna do is work with the district team to find out, hey, you know, is there a bank of laptops or, you know, a place where people could come at least to the district office to complete the survey, maybe even view the interviews, so, you know, they could do it all in-house. That's the logical idea, I guess, that comes to mind, and we're certainly open to other strategies that we may not be aware of, that your folks have tried, you know, beyond that.
Keith, do we have a cow on staff, cart on wheels, computers on wheels? Do we have, sorry, do we have computers available at the district office that we could do something like that for individuals who come with limited access?
Director Campbell, we have ways to do that, but before we go down that road, can I ask a question of the board? That'd be okay. How do you, and this might be a question for John and Chris as well, how do we envision this board meeting happening? Are we talking a normal board meeting setting, live in person, as well as a hybrid? Or are we thinking on Zoom only? That's gonna be important for us to know so that we can plan ahead. I think I've shared with a few folks, my right-hand person for backing us up for board meetings is gonna be moderating this particular upcoming board meeting due to my availability. So I want to make sure that I set him up for success and ensure that he is there to support you all, and he'll do a great job. I know he will, but I just want to make sure that that is very clear before we plan too far down this rabbit hole, if that's okay.
I'd like to have it in person for sure, to be able to look at them and see their expression and their body language, and plus to be able to connect, other than we're connecting right here, I think it's important, and then have it available on Zoom to give feedback. On the questions on the Google Docs, three individual Google Docs, what I found when I was going through the interviews, you know, the first one I'd hear is, oh, they're great, and then I'd hear another one, and oh, you know, they're great. So, you know, and then I ended up ranking them one, two, and three, and then it was, I put my recommendation to the board. So if there's a way that, I don't know how you can have three separate documents and then put which order is your favorite. Is ever speaking is your favorite at the moment? I mean, that's just a tendency.
Well, if I, I'm gonna share my screen here for a moment, and just share the format we recommend, is rather than rank ordering the candidates, we simply ask folks after each interview to respond to these two prompts, strengths of the candidate, and then questions or concerns you might have regarding the candidate. And the idea here is the board makes the decision on who they're gonna select, and typically, these are the kinds of things that are part of the consideration process. Where is this candidate very strong? How does that line up with what our greatest needs are and what our stakeholders told us? And are there any areas of concern or questions that we have about this candidate or that our stakeholders have about this candidate that maybe we didn't see? And this has worked very well, but that was part of what we wanted to put in front of you in draft form, because if you'd rather ask things differently, we're certainly open to that. But I share that model with you because it's worked really well in recent searches.
What do we have, follow-up questions, though? Because I'm envisioning that we have the interviews and that we meet, then we make a decision, and that, you know, we have, we've selected out of a, the public doesn't know this, but we selected quite a few questions, ones that we agreed upon. So if they have an ancillary question that we didn't hit on, so how do we address that?
Sure.
I would rather not address additional questions. It seems like we have, we have things pretty well mellowed down in terms of what we're looking at and for the community.
Sure. So what I'd share with you is, you know, we do have some finite time that we're working with. And so part of the reason we did the stakeholder survey at the front end of this process was to really nail down what the consensus opinions are among your stakeholders regarding the most critical issues facing the district and the most important leadership characteristics that you're looking for. And so at this point, I would tell you, you certainly, as a board, will lean heavily on that feedback that you've already received in not only considering who is the strongest candidate, but that informed the activity we just finished, which was development of interview questions. So that's kind of the through line with the stakeholder feedback. Unfortunately, we don't have the time for a comprehensive search, so the question you're asking in a comprehensive search would often be taken care of, because sometimes you'll have three, four separate groups that finalist candidates will cycle through in a screening process, and they can ask the questions directly. We just don't have the luxury of time for that kind of robust process, but we strongly recommend the board consider that kind of thing if and when you post the position that is not interim in nature.
And you will have time, a little bit of time. The results come back, you know, real time. So you'll be able to, you know, scan the feedback that you're seeing after each interview, and if there are some themes or some probing questions that are listed by the community or staff, you may want to incorporate those in your executive session board interview. So it is condensed time, but there are some ways for us to keep a pulse on the kinds of feedback you're getting real time.
So I'm over here giggling to myself about this a little bit, just with the format of the questions. So we, from our survey, we saw we have robust community participation, and I think in the interest of clarity, if there was gonna be like a limit on the amount of text that goes into those responses, that it might be good to include that so that folks know about how many words they can share with us in the interest of time and also just being succinct, because we've got some eloquent folks out there.
Yeah, so we'll go with a short answer format, and that's a good suggestion. Maybe in the instructions, we'll just add, these are short answers. You have this many characters or this many words. Yeah. So just a clarifying question. I'm hearing strong support for a public interview. I just want to clarify, does the board also want a executive session interview with each candidate in addition to that?
I had brought that up initially at our, well, at our initial meeting, and that was prior to knowing the strengths and the expertise that you guys are gonna provide. You've really covered a lot of items, and I was, I did not know the types of things you'd be checking into and doing in our behalf. So myself, I have no reason to think we'd have, we'd have a need for an executive, an executive session. So it would just be, I think, would be, the public interview would be adequate.
Others? All right, so.
John, I just wondered if you might want to speak to, if you choose not to have an executive session interview, you will still be gathering an executive session to review the candidates. So that's what we would envision and propose for that evening. You may do three open interviews and then convene in executive session, or you could do, you know, each individual interview in the open, go into exec, open exec, and then have one concluding executive session. Does that make sense? So sort of, those are the options before you.
I have a question, Christine, if maybe you can help clarify as well. Do the candidates that we mentioned in the motion, who would be, we would be looking at, are they going to be sitting in the audience, getting to listen to the questions and the interview responses of the candidate before them, or are we gonna pull them in one at a time?
One at a time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question. And I would just add that we also are over, when we invite candidates to interview, that, you know, we all have devices, phones, et cetera. We ask them, as a professional courtesy, not to tune in, so we're explicit about that request, so that if you're the first one to interview, you know, versus the last one, you know, we don't want to advantage or disadvantage any candidate that way. Thank you for the question.
So I. Based on what you said, it seems like either having an executive or public follow-up interview after we've had the initial public interview and after we've received feedback and had been able to deliberate is standard, that there is that second part where you're coming back and you're speaking with applicants. Is that correct?
It's just a model some boards have wanted, so that, for example, the board, in a model like that, they would listen to the public interview, just like your stakeholders, and then we would ask the candidate to take a 10-minute break while we meet with the board in executive session to ask you, look, are there further areas or qualifications you want to explore with this candidate based upon what you heard in the public interview? And if the answer to that is yes, then we help you decide who is going to ask the clarifying question or ask the person to explain more about the answer they gave on this question, you know, that sort of thing. And occasionally, there are board superintendent relations kinds of questions that the board likes to ask in an executive session versus a public session. So those are some reasons boards have given us in the past, but we have had boards do just the public interview and then have an executive session at the end of those public interviews and make a decision. So we've seen it both ways, and we're not trying to steer you one way or another. We want to just make sure we're responsive to what this board wants to do, so. Other board members have a preference for public interviews with an executive session interview, or do we just go public interviews? Right now, I think I'm hearing that the board's leaning towards just doing a public interview with each candidate.
I agree with what Chuck was saying of a public interview, and then honestly, getting through each of the, each of the candidates. It also gives the community time to respond, and then at the end of all of it, we would meet in executive session. It feels more streamlined and allows us to get through everything. I don't know what my fellow board members think about that, but I don't feel the need for us to have an executive session to further interview the candidates.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't think there's anything that we would need to ask them further in an executive session that we can't ask them in front of the public with all of the background that you have done.
Okay.
Yeah.
I agree, and I would just ask that we have like 30 minutes in between the last interview and the executive session, so that if we do have any input for the last interviewee, people are able to communicate that using the survey.
All right. Well, that does simplify things, because what we'll do then is schedule probably just over an hour to make sure we include some of the board superintendent questions you shared with us for each candidate. And then we always schedule in a little break between candidates, so the board gets a break as well. But with three candidates, I think we could, on the 28th, I think we could get away with starting like at 1 o'clock, so that you all get lunch. And then if we think about that, we'd be, you know, in around 4:30 probably, finishing with the final, the third candidate. And if we took a 30-minute break, that would push us to 5 o'clock for an executive session, meaning, you know, I'm gonna speculate that anywhere from 60 to 90 minutes, the board might need to discuss candidate qualifications, and then following that, resume the public meeting to announce whatever decision you might want to make. So how does that sound in terms of a scheduling plan? And are you available starting at 1 o'clock?
And then we still just need to answer Keith's question, right? So we're gonna do it in public. I mean, we're gonna do it in person.
Right, so Keith, yes, we would need to broadcast the meeting just as we're doing tonight, but the board would be in person and the candidates would be in person. And then if we're gonna have Computers on Wheels option for folks that want to come to the district office, we'd have to work with your staff there to figure out logistics around where people would report, and do you want them to RSVP, so you have enough machines and a large enough space, et cetera, all that. And Keith, anything we haven't answered that you're still wondering?
So, okay, so I want to make sure I got, make sure I understand well, and then I can speak to that a little bit further. So July 28th, Thursday, at 1 PM is when we would start. That would be in the boardroom there at the district office, and it would be just for us in Monroe, this would be a standard board meeting that starts at 1 PM in the afternoon. And then we can have, we could have a cart of Chromebooks in there available, ready to go to support that. Obviously, like I said, I'll have Jesse on deck to be able to moderate that, and we could easily have one of my folks, you know, one of my other folks helping provide support if, you know, if there's issues getting on a Chromebook, that kind of thing, that they could there, you know, sit there in the room and do that. I guess the, I'm gonna have to, and John, you and I and Chris may need to have a quick conversation offline, just to make sure I understand all of the, what you're looking for as far as easy access and those kinds of things to the, to the Google Forms, to make sure that, you know, they can fill those surveys out correctly, easily get to them, those kinds of things. So. to the Google Forms to make sure that, you know, they can fill those surveys out correctly, easily get to them, those kinds of things. So I'll probably want to try and touch base with you guys maybe tomorrow if possible. John and Chris, you both have my, my number. So we can connect and kind of go over that a little bit tomorrow. I just want to try and have that all laid out for my team to make sure they're ready to go. Is there any other things that the board can think of that, that I need to answer? So Director Johnson, I'll call on you first and then Director Campbell?
You should let Director Campbell go. Keep talking. I'm just wondering, any, or will the forms be available in Spanish? Are we going to have a translator for this appointment, this meeting?
So I can't speak to the translation on the forums. I'm going to leave that up to John and Chris. As far as having a translator on deck to support that. That's a, that's an interesting one. Because most of our folks who typically do that work for us, Director Johnson, are do not work during the summer. So that may be a question that President Bumpus and a discussion that President Bumpus needs to have with interim superintendent running as well as some of the executive staff on how, how we're going to cover that part. Cause I, I cannot speak to that. Yeah, that's going to have to be a discussion with, with President Bumpus and those, those in executive cabinet to kind of cover that part. So.
Yeah, it's simple.
Sorry for the non-answer.
Yeah. I, I can't say on the Google Form, it's simple to create a Spanish form. So we can do that. We do have to defer to the district on translation interpretation services.
President Bumpus, I'm going to promote our executive director of HR, Dan Johnston, real quick so he can speak. I think he's got some ideas and he wants to speak to you all. So hang on just a second.
Hello, can you hear me guys? All right. Yeah, I think that's important enough. I can start working on it tomorrow. We can reach out to Language Exchange. There's also a couple vendors that actually work with the Zoom platform. So they give you a written transcription as you're going. So with the board's approval, I will, I'll work on that tomorrow and try to get that in place.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan.
All right. Well, I, I think then we've determined that we're going to interview three candidates. We're going to start the process at one o'clock PM. We will get, we'll work with President Bumpus and Director Barnes to vet a draft of that schedule, just to make sure we've thought of everything and you have ample break time put together. The, the only other question I'll plant a seed now is if we are pushing into five o'clock and later in the evening. I'm not sure how the board is handled planning for a meal dinnertime. So
You've gone until 11:00 PM, John. We're good.
Oh, anyway. We'll get that going and then we will be on the phone this evening informing the three candidates that they have been invited and that we'll be following up with them very soon with a specific schedule that they can, so they can know when they're to report. All right. And then the feedback form, we'll create that and work with Keith. And we'll, Keith will connect with you tomorrow and make sure we get all the questions answered. It looks like Keith has something else.
Yes, sir. Another question, just one other point of clarification. So, and I'm looking at the board directors for a little help on this and, and Dan can maybe chime in too. So we'll start, just to confirm, we're starting at one. And how long do we think we're going to go? Because I need to, when I schedule and, and, and I know that's a, it's kind of a funny question, but it's not a funny question from a technical perspective. I have to know when I set up the, the Zoom meeting, the, the webinar, you have to put in how long the meeting's going to last because if for some reason it got accidentally cut off, we wouldn't be able to pop back in and that could be very problematic. And so I want to make sure we cover that base to, to keep us all in the, in the good graces and make sure we're doing the right thing and don't miss any recording of any part of that interview process. Does that make sense? So can somebody help me with that, please?
It does. With three candidates and President Bumpus's request that we have a 30-minute window before exec session begins, I'm going to say if you say the meeting starts at one and ends at 8:30 PM, that that's an ample window. I just want to clarify, it's possible that we're, we're done inside of 8:30 PM, which I, I assume is fine.
And that's clarifying that that includes exec session. Keith as well. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Chris and John for that. I need to look and see what that looks like because I know there are some recording limitations. So I need to look into that and, and let you all know on that. Okay. So
Okay.
with me on that. We we'll see what we can do and get it all figured out and I'll get, I'll get some final answers through our exec cabinet to President Bumpus to ensure we're all on the same page. Okay?
Thank you.
I was just wondering if I could have John give a review of the work that HYA has done on the obtaining the, the candidates, the letters and the phone calls and the references that were checked. We received a very thorough list and some were 21 pages long. And so for those that well, for the public, just know that it was, it was very thoroughly done. So could you give a review of the information that we received? So that can be communicated?
Certainly. So starting with reaching out and doing recruiting and obviously the advertising, the board approved. As search consultants, we vigorously scour the market and activate our own network of potential candidates and determining who is number one available for an interim opportunity and interested. And in doing so, you know, we also point people to the application process. We organically also have people who discover the position via advertising and make application. Once we know that an applicant is serious, we do a thorough vetting process. And with most candidates, we actually do a pre-screening interview as associates where we ask questions that align with some of the strongest themes your stakeholders identified for Monroe. And in doing so, we're listening carefully for how they would go about approaching leadership with those challenges. And then we do Google searches. We do many of the same things you all do as board members, and I'm sure many of your stakeholders do. And that is as soon as we see a name, we're out there on social media, on the internet, doing a search to see what's out there on that person that is great or could be of concern or raise questions. And that's the part of what school districts pay us as a firm to reveal and uncover. And we spend significant time doing that. And in doing so, we prepare a summary for the board. So instead of just sharing a cover letter, a resume and some letters of reference, we prepare a comprehensive spreadsheet that contains all that we've learned on each candidate for the board. And it's not to steer the board toward a certain candidate. It's strictly what it is. We learned what references told us, what we found in our social media searches and our Google searches and the board folds all that into their decision on who ultimately they'd like to interview. Does that get it, Chuck? Christine, did I leave anything out?
I think it's good.
I just really appreciate it. I didn't know the, the depth that you guys would go into. And to be able to distill it to a point where we can make a decision. There was a lot of candidates and we had a good discussion and we were able to ask questions and you guys had good, solid answers and we were able to come up with some choices that we could present to the public and I think they're good options for the school district.
Thank you. President Bumpus, that checks off all the boxes that we had planned to address in this planning segment. And we want to thank the board for the time and open it up to any further questions you might have.
Anyone have questions? No. All right, Chris and John, I just want to thank you as well. This is my first time going through this as most, I mean, most of the board is new to this. And so I just really appreciate how much guidance you've given us and how much work you've done. I think it's probably more than you bargained for, Ben. And I really appreciate that you value this community so much that you're willing to do that and that you well, that you see our hearts in all of this. So thank you so much for all of your work. And if there are no other questions, yeah, all right. It is 8:23 PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great night.